I'd like to call the school board meeting for Peoria Public Schools, District 150, May 13th, board into order. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kostick. Mr. Koss. Mrs. McCallum.
Present.
Dr. Rankin.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
President Murphy.
Here.
We have six present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started with announcements this evening, I'm going to call our attention to Dr. C.T. Vivian. They did the three boards to my left, your right, something, and we, I can't read what it says.
Jetten swiftly into summer.
Jetten swiftly into summer. Awesome. Thank you so much for putting that up. That looks awesome. And over here to my right, to your left, is the Sterling Jaguars, hanging up memories. So lots of memories throughout the school year, it looks like. Let's start with announcements. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Vice President, Dr. Rankin. The eighth grade graduation ceremonies are being held from Tuesday, May 20th to Thursday, May 22nd. Contact your school for additional information. Second announcement I have, high school graduation. The class of 2024 is graduating this Saturday, May 18th. Peoria High School's graduation begins at 11 o'clock a.m. at the Peoria Stadium, followed by Manuel High School at 1 o'clock p.m. at Manuel. Richwoods High School is at 4 o'clock p.m. at the Peoria Stadium. Remember, these four quick tips for a smooth graduation. One, come early. Two, carpool. Three, bring a ticket. And four, clear bags only. Thank you.
Mr. Koss.
PTO Council meeting. The last PTO Council meeting for the school year has been moved from next Tuesday to this Wednesday, May 15th at 6:00 p.m. All school PTO members are welcome to attend.
Uh, Ms. Ross.
Last day of school for students is next Friday, May 24th. The last day of school for Valeska Hinton and Knoxville Center for Student Success is Monday, June 3rd.
Thursday, May 18th is Speech Language Pathologist Day. Join us in appreciation for our remarkable speech pathologists who teach our students how to communicate.
Memorial Day, no school. All schools and offices are closed on Monday, May 27th, an observance of Memorial Day. And the Annie Jo Gordon Splash Pad. The Annie Jo Gordon Splash Pad will be officially open on Saturday, May 25th until Wednesday, July 30th, from noon until 7:00 p.m. We're gonna move on to the Remarkable Spirit Award, Mr. Eric Thompson from Knoxville Center. Thomas, sorry, Thomas from Knoxville Center.
Thank you. Dr. Karat, Vice President Rankin, Board President Murphy, members of the board, District Administration, and the Peoria Public Schools family. Also, gotta give a special shout out to my Executive Director, Dr. Michelle Hassan. It is my pleasure to present Ms. Cortina Woolley, please stand, stand by me, to present to you as one of this month's Remarkable Spirit recipients. Batman had Robin, Michael Jordan had Scottie Pippen, Starsky had Hutch, Peanut Butter has jelly, Pizza has chicken wings, and I am so happy to have Ms. Woolley at the KCSS. Ms. Woolley is the longest-serving member of the KCSS. I happen to be third, right behind Ms. Woolley and Mr. Dennis Robinson, our custodian. She is so much a part of the success of our school. Being a Singleton Principal is challenging, but being a high school Singleton Principal kicks it up a few notches. There's no way that we could do all that we do without a great deal of teamwork and a remarkable staff such as Ms. Woolley. Ms. Woolley is the epitome of Remarkable Spirit, and I am so thankful to have her as part of our staff. Together, we have learned, laughed, cried, argued, been made up, and grown so much over the years. I am a very peaceful and laid-back type of principal, but if you try to take this Woolley from me, you will have a challenge in your hands. Thank you, Board of Education and Dr. Karat, for allowing the KCSS the flexibility to do all that we do. We are projected to have over 75 graduates this year, and we will definitely meet or overextend our earlier projections. Also, again, thank you for recognizing remarkable staff such as Ms. Cortina Woolley. Thank you.
Ms. Woolley, would you like to say anything?
Thank you to Peoria Public Schools. I've been in this for 20 years. I just appreciate everything. Like you said, we can cry together, laugh together, and everything. I just say thank you.
Excellent. And if anyone from Knoxville Center or any of Ms. Woolley's family is here, please stand up so you also can be recognized. We're gonna get a picture, and I think we have something? No? They have it up there. Oh, perfect, you already have it. Congratulations, it sounds very well deserved. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Ms. Tate from Treewind K-8.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Karat, and my Executive Director, Ms. Brooks. This evening, I am acknowledging two of our paraprofessionals, and I am just going to read two excerpts that were submitted. Excuse me. Mr. Mabels is one of our Special Ed one-on-ones. Since joining the Treewind staff, he has been flexible, going between our three primary cross-cat classrooms, getting students, and taking them with him for timeouts, extra interventions, and what extra duties that Ms. Minders, myself, or Mrs. Belcher asks of him. He always has a smile on his face and food in his hand. Mr. Mabels is a one-on-one, like I said, he really works with all the students. When he sees a student that is struggling, he will ask them what is wrong and will work with them. One, whatever problem or issue that he may have, he never complains when asked to help out, and when he knows that a student is struggling, he will check on them throughout the day. There have been many times that they have asked him, or this is Ms. Minders, when I've been on my way to ask him to help out in a room, and he is already there, working with those students. Mr. Rutherford is also one of our parapros in our BD classroom, and he is exposed to a myriad of behaviors throughout the day. He rarely complains, shows up every day, and leads our after-school program. He often checks on the students in the classroom he's assigned to and on the weekends. The students may give him a hard time, but they look forward to him and seeing him every day. Mr. Rutherford is our gentle giant. We have never seen him get upset or even yell. He remains calm even when the students are upset and taking their frustrations out on him. He comes to work on a regular basis and has a positive attitude every day with all of our students. So I would like to present Mr. Demetrius Mabels and Peyton Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Mabels or Mr. Rutherford. Rutherford, would you like to say anything? Okay, perfect. Did you wanna say something?
I just wanted to say thank you.
Awesome.
Appreciate this thing, too.
Awesome. And if anyone from Treewind or any of these gentlemen's families are here, if you wanna stand up so you can be recognized also. Is anybody from Treewind here?
It's my son.
Oh. And I think we are gonna get a picture. Did you hear something? Again, two well-deserved recognitions tonight. Thank you so much. We have one last one, Ms. Cobb from Valeska Hinton.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Karat, Executive Directors. It is my greatest pleasure to recognize one of our most unsung heroes, which is Maria Laban, known as Jessica Laban. Jessica is our bilingual screener. She performs screenings, developmental screenings, four times a day with new students every day coming in. The ability to meet parents, this is the first time, many parents are coming into the school, so her ability to be warm and welcoming and reassuring is evident each and every day. Not only that, but she is our data analysis, right? So she takes all the data that comes from the screenings, puts it together, and helps us look at the information, make school-wide decisions. So I'm very, very reliant on her. So it is my greatest honor to recognize Jessica Laban for all that she does for Valeska Hinton and early childhood.
Ms. Laban, would you like to say anything?
Well, I'm just gonna give thanks to the board and give thanks to Ms. Cobb, because without her, her trust and her support, I wouldn't be getting this.
Excellent.
And of course, I wanna recommend my coworker, Cindy and Susan. Every day, she's with me, supporting me, and that's awesome, too. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Another well-deserved. We're gonna get a picture. Ms. Laban, we're gonna get a picture. And if Ms. Laban's family or anyone from Valeska Hinton is here, if you wanna stand up so you can also be recognized. Next up, we have awards and recognition, Most Improved Attendance, Dr. Karat.
Thank you, Dr. Rankin. Attendance, this is under the Most Improved Attendance for the month of April. As many of you may know, that as a district and a board, we focus a lot on attendance. Our principals work so hard with our families and staff and students around ensuring that it's in a really good place. The district has a goal of 95% attendance rate, and so attendance for PR public schools has been staying steady for the last couple of months, but some schools have really, they're really hitting it out of the park. So just wanted to congratulate them, let them know we're seeing their efforts, our principals, our teachers, our kids, the whole school community, we're seeing you and we're recognizing you and we're thanking you and encouraging you to continue to do what you're doing because it is working. So we have Manuel is in first place with a 6.45% this April compared to last year. We're doing April '23 to April '24, so that's pretty impressive. I mean, 6% is very, very significant. So Ms. Hawks, we've recognized you many, many times before, so come on and share with us what's working. Six times, she's been recognized six times. And I'm going to give you the banners, you and Ms. Brooks, and you guys could take the photo op with them, okay? Thank you. Go ahead. Principal Devon Hawks of Manuel High School.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Karat. It's pretty cool to be here, month after month. I'm really appreciative to work for a district that allows us to do things outside of the box, to do innovative things that probably have never been done before. I appreciate Dr. Karat and Dr. Hassan for always encouraging us to do things how we wanna do them, and we're not just doing busy work, we get to do things that actually moves a needle. We are supportive, and we hope to carry all of that into next year for even more gains. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll make sure you get a little gift card, okay, tomorrow? You'll take that. Then second place is Elise Fort Allen Academy. Again, almost 5%, 4.71%, and I know this is a big deal for them, right, Ms. Brooks? They've worked so hard, they have so many things that they have to contend with, and I'm just really proud of their focus, their tenacity, and just the hopefulness, the thinking that we got this and we're going to overcome. Because, you know, we talk about PPS, so work is not easy. So Ms. Rogers, are you here? I did see Ms. Shula. So Ms. Shula, you're representing? Okay, so come on down. Ms. Shula is Assistant Principal at Elise Fort Allen. Let's give her a round of applause. And Ms. Brooks is the Executive Director for Elise Fort Allen Middle School, so thank you, Ms. Brooks. Thank you for all of the hard work. Any comments? Ms. Shula, what's working for you guys? What's your number-one strategy that you think is?
Good evening. You know, Mrs. Rogers is amazing at thinking outside of the box and motivating the kids. I think the teacher buy-in and the energy that the team is bringing every day to excite the kids, even with our LOLs, they wanna come in, first graders, kindergartners, eighth graders, they wanna give a joke that's said every morning, they wanna be the first to give that LOL. So we have Coach K, who had a lot of our parents in class at Manuel High School. He's on the porch every day cheering the kids into the building with us and our counselors. I just think it's a team effort.
Thank you.
And it seems to be working.
Awesome.
So we're gonna keep it going.
Thank you. Congratulations again. And then Rollin' Akas, again, in a year, they have increased their attendance from last year by 2% this time of year. Is Mr. Barber here?
No.
Yeah, we would've seen him because he's tall, right? So let's give, so he represents Rollin' Akas. Maybe, Ms. Brooks, I should've reminded him? That's my school, sorry. All right, thank you very much. So that's it, I'll turn it back over to you.
Awesome. Next up, we have Love, Life, Outreach Vocational Training, Dr. Michelle Hassan.
Good evening. Let me try that one more time. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Board President Rankin, Board Members, Dr. Karat, and our wonderful community audience. This evening, we'd like to recognize students who participated. I'd like to welcome Love, Life, Outreach Vocational Training to join me at the podium. They provide a national accreditation for students, the NCCER, which stands for National Center for Construction, Education, and Research. This year, they've worked with a number of students to provide them with training so that students can earn this certification and go out into the workforce and work with local contractors and work with local businesses, and so they are able to be readily employed. And that's what school is about, right? Getting ready for the future, being able to be a productive citizen and contribute to one's own community. So we are so proud of you all, young men, for being here today, for having earned this certification, and for making our entire school, district, and community so proud. So thank you all for your hard work. Some of the things that were said about you all today is that you were engaged and that you were focused, and it just made me so proud to hear about all of the wonderful work that you all did. So congratulations, and again, we're so very proud. I have something for each of you. Would you like to say something? Would you all like to say something?
Sure. To the board this evening, and Dr. Karat, and Hassan, and also Dr. G, and to our angel, Martha Ross, who opened up the door to allow us to provide this national accreditation for skilled trades training. We are teaching plumbing, electrical, carpentry, HVAC, masonry, painting, we even moved into green technology for solar weatherization, and we hit from the state of Indiana, where our main campuses in Indianapolis were able to teach all throughout Indiana, whether it be public, private, or charter. But something led me back to Peoria to make sure that Peoria has this opportunity. I tried this some years ago, and we were not successful because I didn't have the accreditation, but I'm proud to report that now we do have this accreditation, and we look forward to working with the board, not only just to provide the training, but also provide the hands-on training. We were able to get the students 20 hours of hands-on training. We know that there's projects that come through the board and relations to work, and so we wanna take them right from the classroom, put them with the local contractors, put them in apprenticeship programs, so that as they're learning, they're earning, and they're owning, and that's what we plan to do. And so thank you guys so much for your time. Look forward to getting a lot of work done. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Greg, can we have Dr. Greg say something, please? We work with her very closely, she takes the notes, she keeps us on task, and you're usually always very quiet.
Dr. Karat and the board, thank you so much for the opportunity. We're so grateful to see this success from this group of students, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
And how many graduated?
14.
14. So that's just a small, yep.
And for the, oh yeah, go for it.
Could, would you introduce the students that are here? I think one of them was on the news, I'd like to hear him say a little something. Richwoods, there's a couple of students that, just a quick, what this meant to you.
Hi, my name is Kendall Johnson, and this program actually helped me with a lot, actually. It gave me another path to go down, along with my culinary program, so I wanted to thank Dr. Leah and Mr. Lipscomb for this.
Excellent, thank you.
Hello, I'm Jairia. This program means a lot to me, because I didn't ever have no other program or option in my life, so it helped me do a lot. Because now I'm gonna think about doing HVAC for ICC.
Excellent.
Dr. Quirk Bailey would snatch you up. Well, if you do that ICC program, you get paid as well.
Can the rest of you introduce your, if you don't wanna introduce yourself, you can have your teachers introduce. Just say your name.
Hello, my name is Bryson Daly, and this gave me like another opportunity. I'm also going to college football at Greenview University, and I thank all the teachers that helped me, it gave me a better opportunity in life.
Congratulations, thank you. Would the rest of you like to introduce yourselves? We're not gonna make ya, but would the rest of you like to introduce yourself? Okay, we got some shy ones up there.
I wanna introduce Willie Benneble back there, stand up, Willie. Willie is a contractor, he's a minority contractor, and he knows everything about this business, and he's taking these kids, you know, seriously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are any family members, educators, or other people who have touched the lives of these gentlemen, if you wanna stand up, we can recognize you also. If you even taught them in earlier grades. You stand up, come on! We all have an impact. Excellent, congratulations. Yeah, Dr. Hassan.
So again, I have the pleasure of presenting this, but I do wanna acknowledge Board Member Martha Ross, who's been so very instrumental in making sure that this program even exists so our students have this option, so thank you. I'm like, you should've stood up like a child momma, too. And then also, Dr. G, she's put in the hard work to make this program happen. So thank you, Dr. G, for all your hard work, and it's her last board meeting, so we appreciate her.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to all of you, and I know that they're gonna wanna get a picture, so put those smiles on. You're gonna have to get closer together also. Is Briasia Bryant here?
Dr. Ike?
She hasn't, she's not here yet, but I can think of her behalf.
You can speak on her behalf? Okay, we're gonna have you up next, Dr. Ike, then, on Briasia Bryant's behalf. Congratulations again to all of you. Next up, we have Dr. Ike, who will talk on Briasia Bryant's behalf, who is the J-1 Program Manager, about the multicultural fair.
Thank you, Vice President Rankin, Board Members, Dr. Karat. So Saturday, May 4th, was the Multicultural Fair, featuring international teachers in the district from 10 different countries, who are here on the International Teacher Exchange Program. We had a very huge turnout from the community. In fact, the museum said there was 800 people there, but I think of the 800, about 300 were there for the program. It was a very, it was a success. Attendees enjoyed quite a bit of performances, live performances, which showcased all kinds of traditions from the various countries. And then we also had local artists there, who exhibited arts, their craft, and face painting, and children and families had a wonderful time. In fact, the video you were watching when you walked in here was from that event. So we are grateful to our teachers, to administrators, faculty members, who also all made this possible. So we want the community to support the teachers. If you see them, welcome them, because they're from different countries, to learn about America, and also you will learn from them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I know that Ms. Ross was able to go from the board, I was able to go, I'm not sure if other board members were, but Ms. Ross, did you wanna talk at all about?
No, it was just a great event, I enjoyed it a lot.
Yeah, it was awesome. I took my son, it was a good event, yep. Next up, we have Tracy Donath for the Curriculum Overview.
Good evening, Dr. Karat, Vice President Rankin, and esteemed board members. I sure do appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about some of the action items that you will see later on in the agenda, and give you a chance to learn more about why these are really important resources for our students and teachers. So the 11 action items that I will be discussing today are listed here, and they fall under four categories. One is student support, one is instruction, one is teacher support, and one is testing. We do all of those things all the time with our students, and I wanted to break them down and give you some feedback on all of them. So first up is student support. One of the action items that we have up is the Pre-Kin kindergarten Family Engagement Kits. These are going to be provided to our preschool students who are at Valeska in Woodruff, and are intended to be activities for families to do together to promote kindergarten readiness skills. We know our students need to come to kindergarten ready to learn, and this is an opportunity to send our pre-K kiddos away, learn some things over the summer, and come back ready to go through family engagement opportunities. Under the umbrella of instruction, we have quite a few different action items. One of them is called Quaver. This is a resource used by our K-8 music teachers, and it is a full curriculum. And it is a full curriculum resource that is digitally available to all of our music teachers in the district. We have a one-year renewal, and it will be paid for by SR3 funding. The TWIG Science Equipment Kits. You'll see we have some equipment and safety materials to be used for the science instruction for grades four through eight. We also have added some reader bundles for grades four and five that are aligned to TWIG science lessons. I think it's really important that we incorporate literacy in with our science, and finding ways to do that is really powerful. This is also one that will be paid for by SR3. Edgenuity is a third one. That is an online course resource for our high school students at Knoxville, Manuel, Peoria High, and Richwoods. Those high school students can take Edgenuity courses to get initial credit. And also, credit recovery gives them an opportunity to catch up on some credits they might have missed. Pretty powerful opportunity for our students to be able to graduate on time with that resource. The renewal we're asking for is a two-year renewal. And you'll see there'll be a couple other two-year renewals that will come up in this presentation. And the reason why we're wanting to do some of those that way is because we have some funding available through SR3 that will be sunsetting, and we will not have those funds available to us. So with the opportunity to get two-year renewals, we could plan ahead for some needs that we will have into the future. These are also things that we've been using in our district for years. So there's no surprise in the resource. We know our students are using it well, we know our teachers like them. So there's, if there's a two-year renewal that you see, there's a reason why. It's already something we're familiar with, we're using, and we want to use that money effectively before it is gone. A few more instruction things that you'll see here. There's Typing Club, which is a resource used by our K-8 technology teachers. This is another two-year renewal, and it is also paid by SR3. This one is interesting, because it is available to kindergarten through grade eight. So our kindergarten students use it to help them learn their letters and the identification of where things fall on the keyboard. But our older students use it to help them type papers more effectively and be more expedient with that.
That old Typing Class, right?
That's right! That's right. Except when I did it, it was actually on an electric keyboard, like typewriter, right? Now they have their keyboards and they use them pretty quickly. There's even games, it's really fun. The middle school PE equipment one, if you remember back last year about this time, we did a PE equipment purchase for grades K through four. And now this is an opportunity for our middle schools to get a renewal of PE equipment. It's for all 12 middle schools, approximately $8,000 of a PE equipment per school. And this will be paid for by Title IV funds that we have reserved for this purpose, to make sure our middle schools get new equipment as well. So you'll notice here, you've seen PE, you've seen technology, you've seen music. So we're wanting to make sure a lot of different departments get the benefit of the SR3 funding before it's gone, and some other funding that we have available. The last one under instruction is the high school career studies textbooks. Now, those are for our special education students who are taking an electives course on employment skills and career awareness. So they take a series of courses. These textbooks that will be available to them, not only will we have hardback textbooks, but we also have digital access for six years with this adoption. And it will give them some soft skills practice for how do you apply for a job? How do you interview for a job? How do you find a job that's right for you and your skill set? They learn about different careers that are out there, and some skills that will be necessary to do those careers. So I think it's really powerful for our students. And this was a special request from our special education department. They have funding available through the STEP grant, which is called the Secondary Transition Experience Program Grant, and have been saving it for just this purpose. Under the umbrella of teacher support, I have two different items. One is the TNTP Algebra I Readiness Contract. We've been working with TNTP for the last three years, and it has been a very powerful, impactful experience for our teachers. Our students have greatly benefited as well. And we would like to continue to support us with the Algebra I Transition to 8th Grade Algebra I. We know that our students are going to continue to need extra levels of support and specialized instruction. And our partnership with TNTP has shown us that it's been very impactful to change teacher practice and help them support their students. So we would like to continue that. The contract that we have available, there's more details coming up on the next slide, so I'll go into it then. But just know that our focus is Algebra I Readiness for the future contract. And it will be paid for by School Improvement Grant and Title II funding. The other teacher support action item that you'll see is a TWIG Science Professional Development. We have already started some of the professional development for our new science program. Our teachers on May 1st, with the SIP day we recently had, had an opportunity to do some professional development, which I think was really impactful to them. But it can't be the only thing we do to support them in the new implementation of a program. So this will give us 10 different professional development dates that we can use throughout 24, 25 school year to support our teachers, to learn how to use all the different components of that program. Back to TNTP, I wanted to dig into this one just a little bit more. We're seeking approval for the 24-25 contract to provide continuous support for middle school math instruction. The contract has two parts to it. One is on algebra instructional support for up to 22 math teachers in grades eight and nine. So for next year only, we will have Algebra I instruction happening for all 8th graders and all 9th graders. And so we know our teachers will need additional support with that. I'm working with teachers all the time to learn from them on what help they need to be really powerful algebra teachers. And one of those things is making sure they have opportunities to learn instructional strategies, get coaching and feedback, and have additional professional development so they feel ready to teach that content. The other thing that is included in the contract that's up for approval tonight is not forgetting that our middle school math teachers have a great impact on Algebra I readiness. So we can't just focus our attention on grades eight and nine and expect it all to happen there. We need to look at grades six and seven as well. So we chose grades six and seven because that's where they start learning pre-algebra skills with equations, and in seventh and eighth grade, they start doing some functions. And so we know that our students need that practice and preparation. We want to continue the great work that has since started this year with those teachers through additional professional development and classroom walkthroughs. And this will be for an additional 20 teachers who teach those grade levels. I just want to remind us that the power with the work with TNTP is that one year doesn't do it all. It takes multiple years to see the greatest impact. And you saw this information when TNTP presented, I would say back in February. But it was so powerful, I wanted to bring it back up. So the teachers who started working with TNTP, back when we initially had our contract in 2021, saw 16.6% increase in IAR testing scores over two years. They didn't change the school, they didn't change their grade level. The big change was the work with TNTP and the professional development that they learned about their content, and the collaborative opportunities they had to work with their team so they could learn from each other. And that's what this contract provides. So this is testament to longevity of work with TNTP really is powerful. And I'd like to see that continue on to next year, to see how high we can get that to go. The last item I have up to discuss tonight are two items related to testing. In case you're not familiar, we do two, well, we do multiple different types of tests. But these are two that are up for action items today. One of them is the NWA test, sometimes referred to as the MAC, which is the Measures of Academic Progress. This is a test that we have our students in grades K through eight do in reading and math three times a year. We use that data for all sorts of things, including monitoring students' progress. I dig into that data on a regular basis to decide what areas do we need to focus on. Not only areas of great strength that we need to learn what's going great here, but also areas where like, hmm, something interesting is happening here. Let's dig in and learn a little bit more. It gives us that opportunity. At the school level, they use that data to make gains with students. They set goals, they have competitions, they work really hard to promote the NWA testing in their schools, and celebrate with the kids when they have successes. Up for renewal is a two-year renewal, and it's paid with SR3 funding. And the very last one is the COGAT assessment. And that one might be one you're not completely familiar with, because we only give that to our fourth grade students. This one is a test that is an alternative entrance test for consideration to Reservoir Gifted Academy for incoming fifth grade students. I find that one to be really important, because we know that there are students who have the ability to be great thinkers and problem solvers, and are just gifted in other ways than academics. And this assessment is one way to find that. It looks for creative thinking and logical processing of how they look at and they tackle problems. So this is an assessment that we add on so that we can find students that may not catch our eye with strong math or reading scores, but that still deserve the opportunity to attend Reservoir Gifted Academy because they're such unique thinkers. This is also a two-year renewal, and it will also be paid for by SR3 funding. So with all that, I know I gave you a lot, but I was trying to give you a quick overview. I'm certain that you have questions that you may want to know more about any one of those items. So if you do have any, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Dr. Rankin?
Yeah.
Oh, Martha Ross?
No, you go ahead.
I was just going to say, thank you for putting this information together. Big proponent on the algebra and science in general. I've made that clear to Dr. Karat. So appreciate you putting together that information. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I knew it was a lot on the way they came on the action items, and I felt it's an opportunity to explain a bit more.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
It's only fairness for you board members. I mean, it's so many, so we just, we discussed, put in something together.
And Ms. Donath has done a really nice job in keeping it succinct. She's a master at creating nice PowerPoints and very making it short and sweet, to the point. Because they're 12 different, I'm like, oh wow, that's a lot of action items and various topics. So let's, let's do a quick one-on-one on that, so thank you.
Member Wilson, are you?
Yeah, I'm Dr. Martha.
Okay.
Okay, I have several questions. First of all, what's the bottom line on all these as far as cost is concerned? When you put them all together, what is the bottom line of cost?
I don't have that, but I can get that for you. I would have to sit here with a calculator and type it all in right now. The total costs are in your board packet for each one of them?
It was kind of confusing. It was a lot of information stacked on top of each other.
It's probably over a million, if not two. But we have to spend that money by September, so, yes.
If I were to estimate, it would be around a million. But it's paid for by different accounts that we have already held the money for.
Right. And many of them, it's like the Quaver we needed, COGAT we needed, NWA we needed, TWIG we needed. So it's either that or the Edflin, sorry, Ms. Ross.
Okay, so when you say we need it, that's one of my questions is, what kind of evaluation process is in place to say that this? We've had it for a while, we're talking about the, that first one you talked about.
The kindergarten readiness kits?
Pardon me?
The first one I spoke on was the kindergarten readiness kits?
No, it was the one you said we've been using and we're saving, we're buying licenses for two years at a time.
Okay, so the Quaver is not one, Quaver is just a one-year, but the first year that I said was a two-year was Edgenuity. That's a high school credit recovery and initial credit digital programming.
So it's, I'm trying to see how we evaluate these programs, because we continue to purchase licenses for them. Sometimes we use them and sometimes we don't. So how are these evaluated? How we know what, I know you said that the teachers love them, but what about the kids? Because it seems like are most of these computerized programs we're talking about?
Some of them are.
Yeah, Edgenuity, that's how. Knoxville runs on Edgenuity only. So you heard him say they'll have a minimum of 75 graduates. So it's the number of students who are graduating, and they have an opportunity to make up their work online. So Edgenuity, every school district has some sort of credit re, credit re, credit recovery tool, an opportunity for students. It used to be, what was the name of that? Not a, a Celis is for K-8.
A Celis is K-8, yeah.
It had another name a long, long time ago, but Edgenuity is the new, the new one now.
I'm still trying to get the answer to my question, which is, have there been any, how can we evaluate some of these programs?
I would say in the case of Edgenuity, the best way to evaluate the program is its effectiveness in helping students graduate on time. Because its initial purpose is to give kids the credit that they otherwise may not be able to acquire, whether it be because they're working during the day, or they have other responsibilities, or they've not passed a class and they need to pass that in order to be able to graduate. It gives them that option. And otherwise, we'd have delayed graduations without that opportunity.
Knoxville is a perfect example. Who attended, Dr. Rankin? You attended Knoxville's graduation, didn't you? Not this year, I think President Murphy did. Have you attended Knoxville's graduation?
I have.
He usually has a good, and Knoxville is just a small example of success, where he'll have about 80, 90 students graduate as a result of the courses that they have recovered through the Edgenuity program.
I've also collaborated with teachers on the content for the courses, and made sure that they aligned with our course curriculum guides for those. So whether or not you take, I'll just say Algebra II. If you take Algebra II and you sit in class and you learn all the content, or you sit in Edgenuity on your computer and you learn all the content in there, it's the same content, because we've designed it that way. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm not.
You're still going, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, what else do you have?
Okay, when it comes to TNTP, will this be conducted now in all middle schools?
It, so our K?
Algebra for all.
The Algebra for all, well, for sure. Absolutely.
TNTP, isn't that what, what?
So TNTP, okay, now I understand. I'm sorry, I was misunderstanding before. Our support for our middle schools has been in all middle schools with the exception of Reservoir Gifted Academy. And in order to have enough licenses to meet the needs of our teachers, for example, the eighth and ninth grade teachers, we have 22, we can do up to 22 teachers. So in order to make sure that we hit the other 11 middle schools, and make sure that we do that, plus the three high schools, we have to leave Reservoir Gifted Academy out. The great thing is, is I know those teachers really well, and we support them separately.
Well, I know that the math courses have been available for some of the schools, but not, not all of the schools in the past. You said it was a?
The math courses?
Yeah, the algebra, pre-algebra courses.
So.
That was provided by TNTP.
Algebra courses have been available in all of the middle schools for the last three years, some virtually and some in person. Next year, we're fixing that, and we're making all of them have in-person Algebra I instruction with TNTP support.
For staff, which is needed.
And when is the professional, I heard you mention professional development we're paying for? When is, we are implementing BH365 in the fall for grades, is it K through four, I believe?
K through four.
When is that profession? I don't see the professional development on this list of.
Correct, because the ones that are on the list are the ones that we are paying for professional development. Sometimes our professional development we do in-house. And so those are done by the curriculum team. Lindsay Bohm is the person who oversees that work with social studies.
The BH365 professional development is going to be done in-house?
What I'm, what I'm saying is that she oversees that work, and she has matched where all of that content is with the curriculum guides for grades K through four. So when she does professional development in those grades and talks through those curriculum guides, she talks to them about, well, here are your units of study. These are the areas that you need to make sure you cover. Here are your resources to support you with that. So within that context, she does provide the professional development for Black History 365, and that is in the works for next year.
Additionally, 10 individuals, middle and high school teachers, will be attending the BH365 professional development training in Irving, Texas in?
At the end of July.
July.
And we had voted on that when Lindsay Bohm came probably a month ago. That was on the docket for us to vote on, and we approved that for the BH365 professional development.
I was, I was talking about in-house, because when we implemented BH365, that training was done in-house, and I was part of that training. Some board members were part of that training as well. And it was online, so, along with a lot of teachers, so I just asked.
So the difference that I'm aware of between what my experience was in that professional development, was that was more of a cultural awareness professional development to help me. was that was more of a cultural awareness professional development to help me and my colleagues be able to be prepared to teach that content. But it's not specific to the curriculum itself. So now what our teachers need is, here's the resource you have and here's how it matches with the content that you need to teach for the course. We've provided them with a professional development on cultural awareness and competency. Now it's time to teach them about how you use the resources that have been purchased. And that's what our curriculum team does really well.
Now, let's talk about the COGAT, uh, testing. How many students are on the waiting list, uh, currently for Reservoir?
For the fifth grade class?
For years I've wanted to have, um, gifted school in all of our schools. Gifted areas in all of our schools and not just, you know, one school. Because there's always somebody on the waiting list, a number of kids not able to get into that. So, I'm not sure why we can't do gifted in all of our schools.
We, we are.
We, yeah.
We are.
But then why would they need to go to?
We provide, so we have not only?
We have both. We have, cause some people, that's all they need. And we have some individuals who, they've tested high and they've decided to stay within your school and it's a best practice. But we, we've inherited the, we've inherited Reservoir Gifted School. So it's a school that n- needs a population as well. But in addition to that, the ones who do not make it, um, it is definitely, um, a given that we have that acceleration, actually that acceleration, um, policy that the board voted on. When was that? Two or three years ago, you remember that? And so they even getting to skip a grade or two if necessary. So the good thing about PPS, man, we have so many options. I mean, we have options after options after options. And so even when I was a principal at Whittier, all of the fourth graders, COGAT, as Ms. Donath said, is, um, just for the fourth graders. It's something that the district has done, I don't know how many years. I was, I was a principal in two thousand, in primary and all of our fourth graders were tested for COGAT and then based on how they did, they would move on to the next level. But that's just a small percentage because we can only take, what, three hundred kids at Reservoir? But again, the other ones are challenged in their buildings and you can add to that.
Absolutely. So you, you are correct. We have, uh, classes of eighty-four. We, so we select eighty-four students to invite to attend Reservoir Gifted Academy. Your question was how many students are on the waitlist? I would say that varies depending on qualifications. We currently have approximately fifteen children on the waitlist. The students, uh, and this is for the fifth grade class. We also have waitlist for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, um, if, if openings happen, which they don't often, but in case they do, there's a process for that. As well as, we also have two other board-approved processes for acceleration that Dr. Karat was referring to. One of them is one grade level acceleration, as in I'm a second grade student, but I can do third grade work, so the child moves all the way up to third grade and becomes a third grader. Um, another one is that they're really strong in one particular subject area. Maybe they're an avid reader, fantastic at reading, but the rest of the things that they do, they're on grade level and that's fine too. So for those students, we have a different acceleration process and they just go to the next higher grade for that instruction and then they go back to their classroom for all the other instruction. So I would argue that yes, we do have that in every single school. It just looks differently in different places.
Do your parents know about that?
It's on our website and I have hundreds of applications I get every year. So I would argue yes.
Yeah, and as a principal, a long time ago, I had both. I had a number of kids. They were amazing readers. They were in second grade. They would go up to fourth grade for reading, then come back. And then, um, I, I think I promoted five kindergarteners to first grade, um, because they were, they came in reading, um, at a very high level. And so we do all of that and we encourage that as well. And I think the community likes the fact that we're meeting, working with the children where they are.
Principals make recommendations, parents make recommend, like, we, we listen to all. And then there's a process that was board-approved prior to my coming to the district, so it's been in place for at least five years now. Ms. Ross, other, more questions?
No, that's it.
Anyone else have any questions?
Those were good.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Uh, next up we have students showcase, um, Dr. Gersonich. I was gonna say Dr. G and then I was gonna try it. Dr. Gersonich.
Good evening, Vice President Rankin, board members, Dr. Karat. We have a little video we wanna start with. It's a, about a thirty-second clip. And I'm gonna ask our students and principal from Woodruff and Chef Yeti to come up while the video is playing.
I haven't seen it yet.
I know, it's top secret. This was from last week. This is our awards and cords day. There you go. So the cool thing is, there's a story behind every smile up there, right? We're not gonna go through all of them, but I will tell you, we had almost a hundred students earn their pathway cords, meaning they completed their entire career and technical pathway at Woodruff. Those were the blue and gold. And we had twenty students that, um, earned the Illinois State Board of Education, uh, college and career pathway endorsement. That's a pretty distinguished honor. So those were the red and black cords. Uh, we had, let's see, about thirty-eight or thirty-nine students offered full-time career jobs. Uh, twenty-nine accepted. We have a whole bunch of students going to college. And, uh, we had two hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars worth of scholarships that our students earned just at Woodruff. But there's more. We also have earned almost five, I say we, right? Because it's, it's a lot of pushing and pulling and cheering going on here with me. But, uh, we, we, we had the kids earn around four, five hundred, I think it was four hundred and ninety-one certifications and credentials this year, which was really great. So, I'm gonna turn it over to our outstanding principal, Mr. Spiker. He's gonna tell you a little bit about the magnificent people behind us.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come tonight. I'm here to let you know about our Pro Start and Skills USA students. Uh, for us, that is our competitions. We don't have basketball, football, sports like that, but we have Pro Start and we have Skills USA. Behind me are the students who are state champions for Woodruff and Peoria Public Schools. They are led by our great culinary teacher, Chef Yeti. I'm not gonna try and pronounce her real name. We just call her Chef. But one thing I will brag on her a little bit, her Pro Start team, uh, in marketing has brought home the state title eight years in a row. Uh, before I, we introduce our state champions, we had three second-place finishes at Skills USA, three third-place finishes at Skills USA. Our nail tech students finished second, third, and fourth. And our barbering students finished second, third, and fourth. One of our culinary students in culinary arts finished third. And one of our culinary students in, um, restaurant management?
Restaurant service.
Restaurant service, my apologies, finished second. So those students are not with us tonight, but those students also podium at, uh, our state events. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Chef Yeti and she'll introduce her wonderful students.
And Chef, how do you do that? Eight, it's like winning the, I am a basketball fan, NBA championship, eight years in a row, like?
I don't know, I got lucky.
What's this, what's this, what's the secret sauce?
Well, just in case there's people from the page or Swiggo, uh, we're not gonna discuss the secret sauce. I like to keep it secret. No, uh, we are blessed here in, in Peoria with, with always having, you know, amazing talent. Uh, my program is full every year, um, cause kids, you know, they, they wanna come into these, uh, career and technical, um, programs. So this year, uh, we started out with about seventy students and, um, I was able to take ten to Pro Start, put them on the Pro Start teams. Uh, and then, uh, we have Skills USA available, you know, for everybody that is, that is interested in competing. I'm slightly competitive myself, so I, I do like to compare how we are doing compared to the rest of the, the state and the country. Um, so, you know, that, that might be a reason that, you know, we, we just push hard, work hard and, uh, um, give it all we have. So, um, so, uh, behind us, we have our, uh, a, a Pro Start management team. We have one student that was not able to make it tonight, but we have Kendall Johnson. Uh, we have Destiny Miller. We have Hunter Fields. And then we have, uh, Josiah Thomas. And, uh, also behind us, we have our community action team. Uh, people are confused on community action, what that is. Um, so, as a school in Skills USA, we can take on as a class or as a school, a project. Uh, so this year, as a class project, uh, what we decided to do is we are gonna teach these, uh, pre-K kids that we have in our building, some cooking lessons. Uh, so it was a lot of fun and really the whole class participated in it. Uh, but then we have, you know, two outstanding students that were able to present that project. Uh, put it all on paper, you know, described to the judges, uh, what all it was that it did and how it helped and impacted the community. Um, and they won gold this year and I'm very excited because it's actually Orion's second year in a row that he gets to go to Nationals. So another little bit of secret sauce is you always wanna pair up some of your seniors that have done and won before with some of your juniors, right? So they can pass on their knowledge. Uh, so we have RC Thomas, uh, that will be representing us in Atlanta as well. Um, and then hopefully, next year, he will be able to, uh, pass that, uh, knowledge on. Uh, one student that I actually have missing here that was not able to make it because he donated blood and now feels a little dizzy, is Mia Lesowski. Um, she actually won, uh, baking pastry, um, for, uh, Skills USA Illinois. And she will also be heading to, um, Nationals in Atlanta. Mia did Skills USA last year and actually placed sixth. Still good, you know, out of about, uh, you know, all the, all the schools that are there. Uh, but she came back and she, you know, from, um, summer break and she's like, Chef Yeti, can we start practicing? I really wanna win Skills USA this year. I'm like, okay, bring it on. So about, you know, five hundred cream puffs and, you know, decorated tuna cakes later. She totally crushed it, actually. I saw the difference in points between what she scored and, you know, the next runner-up. Um, so yeah, so just very proud, like. And some of our students here, you know, actually did both Pro Start and Skills. Uh, but due to us competing in Baltimore for Pro Start, you know, weren't able to, um, compete. Like, uh, Hunter, for example, was our president for Skills USA this year. Uh, but he couldn't even attend Skills USA today because he was simultaneously competing in, uh, Baltimore, so. Anyway, I, I thank you very much, uh, for supporting us. Uh, I did see an action item on here later, so, hopefully.
Support your trips?
Yeah, hopefully that can be approved.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And if any, um, families or educators who have impacted these, um, students over the years, please stand up so you can also be recognized. Congratulations again, um, on your hard work. And I know that they're gonna wanna picture, so get close. Tracy, you wanted Tracy. Tracy's right there.
Yeah.
Oh, some of the families here. Some of the families who just stood up, can you go stand with your students? We're gonna get some families in also. And I'm hoping that all these families who are standing up, you get some really good food at home too. They're like testing out their, their inventions at home.
I tested, it's very good.
Good. Those sweet, those pastries, right? That's what, that's your, that's your go-to?
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Spiker, principal of Woodruff Career Technical Center. Chef Yeti is amazing. And then Dr. G is, is the mastermind behind all of this. We're gonna miss her, um, a lot. Doc, I'm gonna miss you. I'll be calling you.
Thank you so much.
She's retiring.
Congratulations. Next up, we have Mariela Garcia-Alvarado for, um, Advantage Communications.
Alrighty. Board members, Dr. Karat, thank you so much for having us today. I know that we are also up for an action item and, um, we'll go ahead and discuss some of the things that we've done this year as well as some of the things we're looking forward to doing. And we have some students as well that are going to be here to present their speeches. So, the year that we are in is our third year. And this year, we actually had four hundred and seventy-two kids that registered for our program. Three hundred and sixty-five of them were service, which means that they remained active and, um, they at least attended one competition. Which means that we had a retention rate of about eighty percent, which is really great because, um, one of the things that we have noticed is that our students and our families are fighting really hard to make it to the tournaments. And Ms. Brooks and I are actually going to be working very early in, um, June and July to start to think about the spaces that are going to be rented out so that our families have an easier time getting there as well. Um, so we expect that number to continue to go up. Now, going into our third year program, and we've had so many successes, but before I start talking about them, I couldn't have done this without my co-directors. So, uh, my co-directors are here with me. Uh, my co-director for elementary programs is Emily Trader and she's right here. And my co-director for middle school and looking forward into the future high school as well is Raul Ruano. So, um, you know, the first year we started with six elementary schools and today we are at twelve elementary schools and nine middle school programs. In year one, we ended up having a couple of breaks at the California tournament, but as we know, this year we came back with a lot of wins, um, so much so that we ended up getting fourth place overall as a school. And, um, looking forward, last year we were contracted to have seventy students, about fifty, um, showed up. This year, ninety-two are already enrolled and we're still counting that number with Ms. Brooks. This year, Annie Jo Gordon was the overall champions, but two schools were right behind them. And it's no surprise that they were because they had their coaches of the year there. At Whittier, the coach of the year who started the program there with us was Jennifer Brady. And we will be missing the next coach of the year from Sterling, who is going to be working on her master's program and is trying to make sure that she fulfills everything for her J-one visa. She actually volunteered for the program for all three years and that was Rhea Matos. So I'm really glad that we're able to continue to work with all of these teachers moving forward. Um, but all of that requires that we continue to train for success. So, one of the things that we do with our staff, when I say staff, I mean teachers and, um, coaches, which are, um, a mixture of people who are from the community, either they are working at the, um, speech level at Bradley or they are coaches at Illinois State. Um, we make sure that we train all. Um, we make sure that we train all of our staff to have deficit model thinking training, high-risk and dual-language mandatory training. They also understand that the work starts with us, so they have to learn all of our curriculums, lectures, warm-ups, games, and even give each other feedback so that we can continue to do what we do with our students. We know here in Peoria that the talent is great. I mean, we've seen that today with so many of the students that are being recognized at state and national levels. And our students are capable of reading, writing, and critically thinking at their grade level and beyond. But they need advocates, mentors, and educators that can give them that one-on-one attention. And we're so happy to be able to do that with so many of our students. So many of our students are reading philosophy, psychology, ethnic studies, political science, steam innovation, art studies, and so many of the classes that you would have to wait to be able to do when you go to college. But they're able to read about all of that now because we're making it accessible to them by making sure that they have scripts or that they can write about these things, um, and that they have that one-on-one support to do so. We know that students across the country are struggling to read at their grade level. Our students are not only meeting their grade-level reading skills, but many of them are champions that are going to be here today are reading high school and college material to be able to perform at their highest level. But how is this possible? Well, we make everything fun for our students. And, uh, for those of you who have attended, maybe you've seen us, uh, either one of my co-directors or me, doing some of the warm-ups with the students. Um, here we have Raoul playing, um, an emotion wheel game with their students, which actually introduce them, introduces them to Robert Plotnik's Wheel of Emotion, which is a very specific psychology, um, emotion wheel strategy that teaches the students how to understand primary emotions versus the relationships that other emotions have to them. And that expands their vocabulary so that they know that there's more words than sad, right? Or that there's more words than joy. Uh, we also play and gamify games like Boggle, Taple, and other identification games so that the students increase their vocabulary and spelling skills. We also do charades to teach them non-verbal communication skills. So, um, the challenge is that they have to be able to define words with their body and teaching them that sometimes our body speaks more than even our words, right? So, a big lesson that we tell our students is like, think about how you're sitting in the classroom when your teachers are teaching you. And if you're, you know, leaning over and you're looking very sleepy, what does that communicate to your teacher? And they start really thinking about their posture and everything that they're communicating to their teachers as well through their, uh, bodies. And of course, excuse me, and of course, we have our warm-ups to help them stretch and get ready for performances geared towards public speaking. We know that we're up for renewal. Um, during 2020, uh, '23 and '24 school year, we expanded to additional schools, uh, at no cost to you. We actually piloted these programs, um, with the, um, advice of Dr. Karat on where we could go and start piloting so that we could create, um, you know, some pathways for our students that are going into fifth grade. And we held lunch practices at many of our schools and hosted practices during fall intercession. We're hoping to continue that and also spring intercession going into next year. And we also want to add Mark Bills to join in on the fun and retain our current school programs. Uh, we are looking to help our students in high school also have a pathway. So the way that we've discussed that pathway is they're going to be returning to mentor and coach. And in exchange, we will be giving them funds to be able to raise funds to go to competitions themselves. So trying to create a high school pathway program that allows them to get volunteer hours, but as well as having an opportunity to raise funds for their program so that they can go to competitions. Our students are ready to prove to you and to themselves and everyone around them that they are ready to become a national-winning program. And, um, because I'm very confident that we can, we have some student presenters today. Uh, London Sifis cannot be with us today, but I did want to take a moment to recognize her. Because of her, she actually ended up recruiting 10 other students to join her team at Maude Sanders. Um, and, uh, she was going to present a speech on, um, climate change specifically titled Dear Future Generations. I'm sorry. But, um, we actually have other students here with us today. And the first person that's going to be presenting for us is our student who has been qualifying for the travel team for three years. She's also a multiple first-place winning champion. And she ended up being the MVP for her school and is returning next year to begin that connection with Central High School. Central High School at this time, from what we spoke with the principal, is, um, they have a speech and debate program, but it's small. I think with Remedy Collins, it's going to get big. So, um, the first presenter is Remedy Collins. And she's going to be presenting her poetry called Disassembled: The Pieces of My Body.
When I was old enough to shave, my hair was on my head. But my rough and wild head hair was no longer considered ladylike. And I had to tame my wild skin. I had to dance and sit and pop waves. My posture was no longer mine anymore. Too thin, too thin, too ugly, too pale, too spotty, too plain, too broken, too frail, too everything. Tell your daughters how you love your body. Tell them how they must love theirs. Tell them to be proud of every bit of themselves. From the tiger stripes to the soft flesh of their gods. Yourself. You stand in front of the mirror. Your hands slide over your skin. Your fingernails never dig into your flesh. But make no mistake, you had never been gentle. And you spend this time ripping yourself apart. You pinch at your belly and watch the red mud on your fingertips play. I met a girl at a party once. She seemed... A few times she said she was starving. There was a full display of tasty foods to eat. She said she could not indulge. I think of her for a moment now. She was so thin to me. I ate some delicious food despite her personal starvation. But we've had one set. You have been criticizing yourself for years. And it hasn't worked. Try approving of yourself and see what happens. In our society, teens are constantly dealing with the pressure to be made an unrealistic body image that is reinforced through social media, advertisements, TVs, and movies. This body image tells teens, if they aren't skinny, tall, don't have a small nose or high cheekbones, then they aren't beautiful.
Thank you so much, Remedy. Um, up next, we have a student presenter who has actually been a first-winning champion. And, um, the other thing that she's been doing is she's been writing her own speeches as well. So that's a really big feat because usually some of our students, you know, um, ask for a speech, but she said, you know what, I'm ready to follow in my sister's footsteps and start writing my own speeches. And that is Jane, and I might butcher that, but you can correct me, right? Malumbama? Mula-bem? Mulbalama. Thank you so much, Jane.
As I'm sure y'all know, Halloween isn't for the weak. I treat like the military obstacle course it is. We have one night, they choose two characters, chart our course. It's successfully immaterial to hope with the best candy offered. The first step is find the perfect costume. Now, I've been getting some nice suggestions, like dressing up as a Power Ranger on my grandma's bad knee. But when people started suggesting being a Native American, a gypsy, or a geisha, I had to take a step back. Something didn't feel right, and unsurprisingly, I was right. In 2018, a yoga study found 47% of Americans who don't think dressing up with cultural costumes is offensive. In reality, the passage is called cultural appropriation, and it's messed up. Cultural appropriation means taking advantage of traditions without violating its meaning. Dressing up in native costumes or native people get hate words wrong, and we've got to talk about it. So today, let's browse the cause, effect, and solution because I decide by seeing any effective costumes of Halloween, I'm taking all your candy and calling it justice. As a rule, I don't take costume suggestions from my mom. She could bitch me to dress up as a ghost when what's in reality, I was just walking around in a bed sheet. But sure, that was 70 years ago. But I still haven't forgiven her. Just like the great ghosts incident, uh, cultural appropriation happens just because people don't recognize it. Boxed December 5th, 2019, details: appropriation is taking something, moving it somewhere else, and then making money off of it. Appropriation is hard to catch because we don't always know who created the idea or tradition. Mother Jones of October 11th, 2019, points to Spanish popular Spanish singer Rosalía's use of the dembo beat, a rhythm created by the Afro-Latin community. She won five Latin Grammys with it before admitting she was clueless about the Rob's cultural background. But regardless of how angry our Rosalía is, it's worth millions of dollars, and we're worth a lot less. But, but unfortunately, cultural appropriation has gone so much, got up, happened so much. We don't even know how it happens or it looks like. The National Geographic of November 20th, 2018 points to Native American imagery on Ellen's motorcycle stores everywhere. Even I didn't think much of the woman on the Land O' Lakes butter logo, but I gotta show you, my family's not buying that butter again. Cultural appropriation has gotten oaked for so long, appropriation is only got, getting worse. Okay, shopbridge, we've been here long enough. If I'm judging by the glare you're getting from the cashiers, the store may have closed 20 minutes ago. Let's get to a solution that's learning about different cultures. Turns out, it's super easy to learn. Ask by Google Arts and Culture and National Geographic, get free access to other cultures and traditions. You can explore a whole word right from your phone. Also, ask questions. Ask questions. We're so lucky to be surrounded by so many different types of people. Ask them about their favorite traditions and what it means to them. At the heart of every culture are families and loved ones. If we really want to, if we really want to connect with each other, all we have to do is reach out. Man, just saw cultural appropriation. Okay, maybe not all, but we're on our way.
You know, when I tell you that we can start building that national team, this is what I mean. But as you can see on this slideshow, we also have some students that I'll be talking to, Mr. Southina, Head or CEO. We're actually begging for the program at Liberty, and I think we can do what we did this last year, which is to pilot the program there and just make sure that they continue to have that pathway to, um, having a speech and debate program. We also have, um, a student who will be leaving our program this, um, upcoming year. Not because she wants to, uh, it's because she just has to move. And, um, she wrote a letter to you all, um, right there where she talks a lot about her experiences with, uh, Coach Emily, her experiences learning about non-verbal communication, um, as well as talking about how much she's going to be missing her speech and debate team and how she'll want to continue to explore those options when she leaves this district. But we know that, um, Peoria is ahead of a lot of districts out here in Illinois because, um, you all have supported a speech and debate program that is not just being done by teachers and their volunteer hours, um, after school, right? But that is being done with the quality of care that you need to create a winning program. And, um, to continue to discuss how we can, um, support our students, we actually have Marissa Sebastian, who has been in the program since fifth grade. So she's been able to experience the elementary and middle school side of it, and she has some words for you all.
Hello, my name is Marissa Sebastian. I go to N H O Gordon and I am in the seventh grade. My experience in the last three years in speech and debate have been a wonderful experience, from elementary to middle school. Speech has helped me a lot with academics, such as my reading skills and my vocabulary skills. I'm super grateful to the coaches for their help and patience. I'm really grateful for all that they have taught me and for the time that they've spent with me all throughout, from fifth through seventh that I am now. My dream now is to go to Nationals and I'm going to work this summer on three speeches, as I did this year, so I could get better and work harder. And hopefully then I'll be able to make it to Nationals as for the work that I've been working on. I just want to say thank you for having me here and thank you to Coach Mariela for being such a good coach to me and a good person. Thank you.
Um, we have been doing this with all of your support, but also with our principal's support. And, um, Lynn Lane, um, gave us some words of her expression. She said that this opportunity has allowed her students to build self-confidence in their communication skills, but it has also taught them how to express themselves through their words. Their students have also learned to be more expressive and animated, not just in speech and debate, but outside of the classroom. And they have learned to practice in, um, the value of hard work, um, and how it will open many doors for them and allow them to think about success. With a lot of students that maybe might have a behavioral problem at school, but they go to one of our competitions and that's where they thrive. We know that some students, they like a little bit of attention, right? And this is the program for them to be in. Um, and then Emily Mastin, who got the program for the first year this year, she said that it was a great addition and support for her fourth-grade class. Overall, it supported our students with, well, um, the speech articulation skills that they had with confidence and enhanced reading abilities. And she really hopes we can continue it next year. And, um, our families who are here today with their students, some of them carpool with us. Um, so they will be leaving with Coach Raoul after this, but, um, Emily and I will stay to answer any questions that you might have. But thank you so much for everything that you have done for our, our program, and I hope we can continue to do it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Hello, am I on? I'm on now. Thank you so much. Um, the students, awesome job, great job. Thank you so much. And if you have families or educators who have been in their lives over, you know, the whole time in their education, if you can stand up, we can give you, um, some recognition also. And the principals, educators, principals, families, all of you, stand up. Excellent. Thank you so much. Awesome. Thank you so much. Um, next up, we have Tracy Donath with Invention Convention students.
Good to see you all again. Uh, Dr. Karat and esteemed members of the Board of Education, I have the privilege to celebrate the achievements of the Peoria Public Schools Invention Convention participants. I am thrilled to announce that this marks the first time a district south of the Chicago area has participated in the Invention Convention for our state. We are so proud to showcase the talent and creativity of our middle school students in Peoria Public Schools. It is important to recognize not only that they're innovative creations, but also the habits of an innovator that have propelled them forward. First and foremost, these young inventors have demonstrated the ability to learn from failure. They've embraced setbacks as opportunities for growth, understanding that each obstacle is a stepping stone towards success. Moreover, they've shown curiosity by asking questions and exploring new possibilities. Recognizing that great ideas often emerge from diverse perspectives, they've worked together, pooling their knowledge to achieve common goals. These students have dared to think outside of the box, breaking free from conventional thinking. We actually had a good discussion about that back there. Progress often requires stepping into the unknown, and they've faced that uncertainty with courage and determination. Lastly, but perhaps most importantly, they've exemplified empathy. Their inventions haven't just been about solving problems, they've also been about making the world a better place, showing care and understanding for the needs of others. So as we commend these young inventors for their remarkable inventions, let's also celebrate their passion, their perseverance, and their creativity. I'd like to introduce you to the Invention Convention grade-level winners from the participating schools. I'm going to have them come up, and if they wish to share their name, they may do so, as well as share the name of their invention. They were quite amazing.
Hi, my name is Ruby and I invented the Shea Cup in 2000.
My name is Grayson Malloy and I invented the angular lift, the angularer lift.
Was his the angular lift?
Angular lift. We talked about how it would make me a couple centimeters taller.
Hi, my name is Josiah.
Hi, my name is Desiree, and I created a heat seat. My name is Desiree, and I created a heat seat.
Hello, my name is Hugo, and I create the Egg Cougar three thousand.
Hi, my name is Andrea, and I created the Dripstopper three thousand.
Hi, my name is Liam Killian, I created the Dripstopper three thousand.
Hi, my name is Jordan Kim, I also created the Dripstopper three thousand.
Hi, my name is Chloe Clark, and I helped make the utility jacket.
Hello, my name is Eli Diaz, and I made the utility jacket.
My name is Micah Havenga, and I made the assist lift.
Hi, my name is Cameron, and I invented the pelts.
Mobile music. Mobile music.
Hi, my name is Tyler Smith, and I created the mobile music assor.
Hi, my name is Dame McKinley, and I made the H2O holder.
Last but not foremost, me, I'm Joshua Benjamin Bungu, I've been the H2O holder.
Congratulations to all of the students. If you can stand up, and we can give you one more round of applause, and any educators or families, if you want to stand for two. Excellent. This is awesome that this is the first time someone south of Chicago has been part of it, so that is so great. Who are the coaches of, are there coaches here? Are there coaches, yes? It's just you, okay, great. And somebody in the back, okay, great.
We have wonderful teachers that participated in the work, and we could not have done it without them. So if we think about how this happened, it was through the efforts of our middle school science teachers.
Awesome, thank you so much to everyone involved.
And Dr. Rankin and board, what we'll do is, next year, we will put them early on the agenda. Yes, I, yes, we will fix that, okay?
Can I compliment them, though? I think they did an amazing job being really patient, and I was so impressed. We talked multiple times about, remember, we can hear people out in the hallway, this is a professional place, and they handled it beautifully. So kudos to you.
Excellent, awesome. If you've got a picture yet, Tracy, have they done a picture yet?
We did one while we were waiting.
Okay, good, I was gonna say go that way or that way for him, but awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Keep creating, keep thinking outside the box, keep experimenting.
Yeah, I think it's nice. Thank you so much. As they leave, we're going to, number nine is presentation by audience. We don't have any cards tonight, and I just confirmed with Dr. Kratt that we can also skip number ten, which is response to audience presentation. So we are going to move on to number eleven. If I can get a motion and a second for the approval of the April eighth two thousand twenty-four minutes. Madam Secretary, can you please call roll?
Mr. Pauls? Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross? Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
President Murphy?
Aye.
We have six ayes, motion carries.
Under information items, we are going to move on to number one, superintendent update.
Dr. Rankin and board, just a few updates. Last week, we celebrated staff appreciation, and I just have to say that our principals, there were so many creative ideas and celebrations that we observed throughout the district from building to building to building. Our principals really did an amazing job. And board, I just want you to know that the staff loved the trades that you sent to each building, so thank you very much on their behalf. And then item number two, I wanted to give kudos to one of our music teachers. I just got this before coming into executive session, but kudos to Ms. Asuko Hearts. Tomorrow, actually, she will be featured by the Illinois Music Education Association. She's going to be part of their fall edition. And so what they're going, it's just a nice opportunity to showcase all of the amazing accomplishments that she's at Richwoods and Reservoir gifted those two orchestra programs. And so they'll feature those two programs and her, and the progress that they've made this year. So it is really neat for her to be featured, and it's really a big honor among all teachers in the state of Illinois. So let's, Dr. Hassan, when you get a chance, she's at Richwoods, and I'll give her some shout out also, since I'm overseeing Reservoir, so kudos to, again, Ms. Hearts for being featured at Illinois Music Education Association. Yes. And then just a quick update, the summer, summer applications are coming in. We have over a thousand applicants so far. Dr. Hassan, when is the last time to register? Ms. Brooks?
Registration was formally over on May first.
Okay, Ms. Rose?
But we are still accepting any applicants. We don't turn away.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
They just won't have transportation.
Thank you, so we're still accepting, but transportation may be an issue. And I think that's it, Dr.
Awesome. Perfect. Number two, financial update, Mr. Willis.
Revenue's year-to-date totaled one hundred ninety-nine point five million. That represents seventy-four point four percent of our budget. Historically, over the past three years through May, receipts are seventy-four point seven percent of budget, so we're right on schedule with, in terms of our revenue through May thirteenth. Expenditures year-to-date total two hundred ten point seven million. That's about seventy-five point nine percent of our budget. Historically, through May, over the last three years, we've expended about eighty point seven percent of the budget, so we're on pace right now to spend less than we've budgeted on the expenditure side. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board members? Thank you. Number three, proposed expenditures over two thousand five hundred dollars. Any questions for Mr. Willis? Number four, Dr. Kratt, report of requests under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests.
Thank you, Dr. Rankin. Under new request status, since our board meeting on April twenty-second, we have received two new requests, and then there were, okay, there were two new requests. Zero are completed, and two requests are still pending. Under pending request status, there were zero. So we have received twenty-seven requests for this calendar year at a cost of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Now to action items, consent agenda. Board Member Wilson, will you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item number one, gifts to school district, year-to-date one hundred and nineteen thousand seventy-seven dollars and nine cents. Donation in the amount of five thousand from Dr. Robbie Bell for Richwoods High School. Donation in the amount of twenty-four hundred from Senator Dave Kaler for Lincoln. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three, payment for travel. Item number four, human resource report. Item number five, overnight field trip manual Peoria High and Richwoods Jazz Festival. Item number six, overnight field trip manual high school girls' basketball team. Item number seven, high school newcomers program curriculum. Item number eight, TWIG science professional development for teachers. Item number nine, TWIG science experiment kit bundles, action item. Item number ten, approval of winning program for eighth grade students. Item number eleven, grades five through eight, physical education equipment purchase. Item number twelve, approval of COGAT testing licenses for fourth grade students. Item number thirteen, approval of N W E A testing renewal. Item number fourteen, Richwoods Roofing Project. Item number fifteen, Mark Bill Secure Entrance Project. Item number sixteen, Charter Oak Secure Entrance Project. Item number seventeen, Elise Ford Allen Roofing Project. Item number eighteen, Athletic Trainer Services. Item number nineteen, asbestos, asbestos abatement project, various sites. Item number twenty, pre-kindergarten family engagement kits. Item number twenty-one, Advantage Communication Speech/Debate Team Summer Contract. Item number twenty-two, Advantage Communication Speech/Debate Team Contract. Item number twenty-three, Approval of T N T P Contract. Item number twenty-four, Overnight Field Trip Approval, Woodruff Career and Technical Center Students to Skills USA National Competition. Item number twenty-five, Approval of Quaver Ed Renewal. Item number twenty-six, Approval of Typing Club Renewal. Item number twenty-seven, High School Special Education Vocational Textbook Adoption. Item number twenty-eight, Approval of Edgenuity Online Learning for High School Students. Vice President, Dr. Rankin, that is the entirety of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Would anyone like to pull any for a separate vote? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Am I?
Second.
Madam, is there a discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Well, I don't want to hold up the process. Look for the resources report. I've got some concerns about some of the, well, first of all, I want some of the entries for twenty-one is assistant superintendent.
Thank you, President. Mrs. Ross, I'd be happy to do that. So when we, you and I have talked about, talked about it before the meeting started, this is a temporary title.
It's not appropriate. We're speaking about one specific person.
They said it wasn't appropriate in the executive session, so.
You can't speak about personnel in the session, but you can also.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with, yeah.
The names are on the list.
Yeah, it's okay, Ms. Ross, I'm okay with explaining to it. It's, it's, it's a temporary holder. It is not going to impact any finances at all, and it's not going to change our org chart. It is, it's an individual who actually received that position and a contract, and we have a couple of work that we do want to accomplish and finish up. And so, and we talked about that in executive session as well, Dr. Rankin, so feel free to join in as well.
The way it was explained is that we have an individual who was given a title because they're going to finish out their contract here at District one fifty, but when their contract is finished, they want to reunite with their family, who is not located here in Peoria, but up north in the Chicago area. And to be equivalent to the positions in the Chicago area compared to downstate, having that title is what is needed for the work that's being done. So the work is not changing, the finances aren't changing, but the way that job descriptions are defined in the rest of the state compared to the Chicago area, that title is needed in order to put her, them in a place of success when they are completed with their contract here.
Yeah, and it will, it will continue with transition. Really, it's for the benefit of Peoria Public Schools and the students and the work, and we don't, we're not losing anything whatsoever. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't cost, it will not cost the district any funds, it's not changing our org chart, and it actually will go away. So one of the things we talked about, hey, it looks like you're, you know, top-heavy, but in fact, we're not, because it's not going to impact salaries, the salary's not changing. It's, it was really a compromise for the district and for the individual, a temporary compromise, if that makes sense. I know it's a little different, but with the work that we're doing and individuals poaching our folks, it was, it was a compromise that we have nothing to lose. So that's, that's the story behind it, if that makes sense. Does that make sense? All right.
Any, any other discussion?
Not on that particular one.
Yeah, Ms. McConnell.
Yes, okay.
Yes. Okay, so then this is a temporary post, when you say, so the next, when that person leaves, it's going to go back to the, or original job, or you're not going to post it as an assistant superintendent?
Correct.
It's only for this one individual?
It's just for that one situation.
Okay, and the, and the, and the goal of this is to help with their resume, so that they can qualify for another job?
The goal is to help, yes, but also to keep them in our district to finish the work as well, because they've been offered that, that position in the, in the other district in Chicago area with really a large, a larger salary, but they, they want to continue to stay here in Peoria, finish out the work, and just be well-positioned for that transition, which will take place at the end of their contract. And it will, and we will go back to the, the original title.
So the contract ends, ends when?
Twenty twenty-six.
Okay, and there's no additional salary, that's understood, it's just so long as we, we are not, you know, confusing if we're given a, an upgraded title and with no expectation of any more money. So if we don't give, give the person the, the upgraded title, then they are leaving? Is that what I heard?
That is, what we talked about was, I, you know, we could stay and finish out this work for the next two years, because I was involved in that process as well. You know, when they, you know, when you're going through the process at that level, superintendents call you, board members call you from that area, and it was, it was, it was, it was a very, very good offer. And so, you know, the time of year and, and looking at what's in the best interest of our, our children and the work that we're doing, you know, the, the idea was, we really have nothing, nothing to lose. As you said, there's no additional salary, you know, the, the title will go back to where, where it's been. There's some additional responsibility, responsibilities, but it, it all aligns with the work that's currently happening anyway.
Okay, so if it's. Doesn't change with, with their retirement system pay either?
No, they're, they're, they're young. No, it doesn't. It's strictly the title. That's it. Temporarily.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before that, do you have more questions about this one?
I just want to say, you said additional duties. We, we have, this particular position is saying that it, the assistant superintendent, I mean, this really needs to be, let the public know what we're saying here, because it does look like, and you said there would be additional duties. However, we already have a person that's in charge of this particular area, which is student services. I mean, what are the additional duties? Are they going to be taking over some of the duties from the current? Are they going to be taking over some of the duties from the current person?
Yeah. Are you talking about Shannon's work?
Yeah.
No, that's the.
She's the director of student services.
No, that's totally different.
Okay, what's this, this title here is, is?
It's totally different. It's special ed, it's, it's social emotional, it's, it is that type of work. It's totally different from what research and Shannon and Renata are doing.
But the title is what confuses me, because it says basically the same thing.
Okay, I'll send you the, the job description, because I do have it. I'll send it to everybody, so you can take a look at it.
Are there more questions around the HR report? Ms. Ross, it sounded like you had another question.
Oh, I, I don't know what number it was, but it was in, do we have two people with the same name?
Which one, Ms. Ross?
It's in the travel report.
Travel? Travel, 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 travel. Which name were you thinking?
It's Crystal something, I'm not on that page right now. But I was just wondering if, if that could be revised, or is it, does it need to be revised? Because there's two, two of the same.
Two, two. Ms. Ross thinks there might be an error in travel. I don't, let me see. Who has travel up? It said if it's a duplicate name, we can rectify it, Ms. Ross.
Okay, that's what I meant. If it's two, if it's a, if it's the same person, it's on there twice, with two different prices.
Okay, we can, we'll look into that. Thank you.
Ms. Ross, did you have more discussion that you wanted to pull out?
No, the name is.
Is that Crystal? Was that Crystal you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the same person or two?
I'll double check.
All right.
You're right, I see it too. She's right, yeah, and it's two different prices. It's on page three of eight of the travel report, for those of you looking, either Dr. Ike or Mr. Willis. You see it? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Other discussion that we would like to have? Okay, we've already had a motion and a second, so Madam Secretary, will you please call roll to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
President Murphy?
Aye.
We have six ayes, motion carries.
Thank you. The deliberation agenda, Mrs. Ross, are you going to be reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me go back there. Do you have it, Ms. Ross, or do you want this one? No, I have it. I just, I just was still in that other page.
Okay.
Okay, Mrs. McConnell and I are disciplined committee. And deliberation agenda is expulsions. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve expulsions listed on the report dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, be approved as presented.
I have a second.
Can we read the number just for the?
Oh.
Number twenty-nine.
Can I?
Ms. McConnell?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, can you please call roll?
Mr. Claus?
Aye.
Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
President Murphy?
Aye.
We have six ayes, motion carries.
Number thirty, expulsions held in abeyance. Proposed action is that the Board of Education approve expulsions held in abeyance, listed on the report dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, be approved as presented.
Second. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Claus? Mrs. McConnell?
Aye.
Dr. Rankin?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
President Murphy?
Aye.
We have six ayes, motion carries.
We have a few presentations that we're going to have, and then we'll have suggestions by board members. Dr. Karat wanted to recognize Dr. G, so I'm going to throw it over to you real quick.
Thank you, Dr. Rankin. This will be quick. Doc, I know your feet are falling apart, but why don't you come up a little bit? So this is Dr. G's last board meeting with us, and, oh my gosh.
Oh, my goodness, what behind you?
Yeah. So, Dr. G, just.
It's like I died.
How? You're still alive. She said it's like she died. How long have you been with the district and?
One, eight years with Peoria Public Schools. I've been in and out throughout the years. I've had a lot of doors open and a lot of opportunities, but this was always home, so I always came back.
Yes, and I appreciate that. I remember I came to this empty hallway, and I called you, you were in Morton, and I says, "Doc, I need you back," and you did come back. So Dr. G's retirement celebration will be at Woodruff on Wednesday. Team, is it at two?
Two-thirty to five.
Two-thirty to five. So I'll turn it over to you guys. Dr. Hassan?
Thank you. It's just two little words, but I can't thank Dr. G enough for the mentorship, the advice, and the guidance that she's given me over the last several months. And I can say something really quickly? We love you! I tell you what, I learned how to be an instructional leader from Dr. G. We were together when we opened the Edison Schools in nineteen ninety-nine, and when I became a principal in two thousand and two, she's the first person I called, and I said, "Help, teach me."
And you were at Northmore, right?
I was at Northmore, and then she became my boss, working for Edison, which was awesome, because she was my coach and mentor, principal mentor.
Yeah.
And she's just awesome, very talented. We're going to miss you. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Ms. Brooks, you're pardoning crime?
Yeah. So Dr. G was one of the first people to welcome me to Peoria. I just came in for a little visit, and there was a flower bouquet card on my, on my desk, and it was from Dr. G. But since then, she has just made sure that, I know the Peoria area, she's taken me around and made sure I know how to move around and get to different places, and taken me to different events with her. She's just made sure that I, because I told her I wanted to be part of the communities, and so she makes sure that she takes me along with her, and I just appreciate everything she's done, and all the advice she gives, and she's my birthday buddy, so.
Couldn't ask for more.
Dr. Bond?
So, Dr. G, one of the reasons I just adore you so much is because, on the one hand, she's the idea person, so she's always, like randomly, you're not even thinking about half the stuff she's thinking about, and she sends you stuff, like, "What about this? Have you heard of this? What about that? How can we this?" And I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, it's."
Stop.
It's, please stop. And then also, balanced with that, she plays her music. She's got her music going. When it's kind of quiet in the hallway, there she is with her music jamming out. We'll maybe be in a meeting, I'm telling the secrets.
Okay.
And she's like texting with real funny things, and I'm trying not to laugh and meet, you know, that kind of stuff. So thank you for being like just everything that counts.
Ms. Rose?
Don't let her size fool you. She is full of knowledge, very spunky, she's got a great sense of humor, very sarcastic.
Yes.
Very, um.
I call it witty.
Okay, witty. But her greatest thing, I think, is the contribution she gave our students here in the district, the great opportunities that you heard from these students tonight, and all that was brought by her, and her great knowledge in writing grants and opportunity scholarship for students that may not go to college. So she has alternative plans for those students who have a chance to have a bright future. So we owe that to her, and hopefully, we could find someone that's going to fill her shoes. We're going to miss you.
Director Boone, you're a lights-on partner and grants partner.
Yeah, also one of my best friends here. I don't think there's any data that can quantify what she's given to the district. You guys will, one of my, the words I hate hearing is, "Hey, I got a grant." It comes with a lot of work.
And I will find you.
She will find, yeah, she will find me. But the, the dollars, I don't think can quantify the data for all the kids whose lives that she saved, kept them off the streets, giving them opportunity, and even my own children attend this district. And as a parent, I'm happy to say are beneficiary of her work, so she's an amazing person and one of my closest friends, so thank you.
And the last project is that kids camp, which is just.
Yeah, so I forgot to mention that.
Yeah, mention it, because Dr. Ike will close you out.
So middle school students, if they're interested, parents can apply. We sent emails to all the parents, but also principals have information. June tenth through the fourteenth, sleepaway camp, so exciting. We're going to, we're shooting for a hundred kids to get to go, so it's really cool. They'll be out in Lewiston, Illinois.
How much grand dollars have you brought in? Was it?
Well, that actually was donors, and so.
No, just overall?
Oh.
Yes.
I kind of lost track after thirteen or fourteen.
So while she's thinking, I think it was about over fifty million?
Fifteen, I think.
Fifteen million?
But I'll take fifteen. Put that on the resume too, but no, I, I, I think, I mean, because there's some repeat years, so.
Renewals.
But it was around fifteen, I think.
Fifteen, that's pretty impressive.
I kind of lost track.
And so once I found out her talent, she became then the Chief Officer of Innovation, and boy, she, she is that and, and a lot more. So I'm going to really, really miss you, because you, you were able to take me to that next level regarding, as everybody says, you know, that reimagining, thinking things differently, and an amazing, amazing, amazing grant writer, one of the best in Peoria, especially with federal grants, which are very, very rigorous and competitive. So just wanted to show you some love tonight, and everybody else, Dr. Ike, come up, please. Everybody else, come out on Wednesday at two-thirty at Woodruff to celebrate that, the legacy of Dr. Susan Gershnik. Dr. Ike, close us out, please.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So you were right in saying that when you arrived, you invited her to join you, and then I think I came a year later. And of course, at the time, you were in curriculum, and I thought she was new to the district, but then she found out that she was full of knowledge, and had quite a bit of institutional memory and knowledge, and I relied on her quite a bit for guidance.
Yeah.
Like Hassan Rose said, she's very witty, and actually quick on her feet, to be honest with you.
He gets my jokes.
You are going to be missed.
Thank you.
Very, very much.
Thank you.
And Dr. G, just like Dr. Corey Molson said, you know, you helped me when I was at Manuel, write that SIG, that six-million-dollar grant, remember? I had to come out to central office.
Yeah, we were upstairs.
And we were upstairs. Yes, yes, so go way, way back, two thousand and eight. Close it out, Doc.
Well, just a second, because Ms. Ross would like to say something.
And you're wearing my favorite purple, so.
How far back do we go? You've been here, left, came back, been here, left, came back.
That's right. A lot of years, a lot of years.
Yeah, a lot of years.
At least twenty.
I do, I've always, you know, admired and respected the work that you've done here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. G, thank you for all your work and dedication and legacy that you're leaving here within the district, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think I got the picture, and again, at Woodruff, they're having, Woodruff?
Woodruff Wednesday.
Wednesday, excellent.
Get some good music going and.
Um, as they're doing one last picture, we're going to throw it over to our, sorry, I didn't tell you this, our student board member, it's not me, it's Dr. Karat. He, this is Chance, and he is from Manuel, he's going to be graduating next weekend, and just tell us what you're doing after graduation.
And can I say something? I'm so proud of him. There was Sterling Merritt Celebration with hundreds of students throughout Peoria County, and they, they recognized the top, the students in the top eight percent of their class, and Chance was one of them, and Zabrina as well. I didn't see Kai, I'm, I'm sure Kai, yeah, but anyway, we don't want to put him on blast.
On blast here.
But we're just so proud of you, and Chance wrote a paragraph which really touched my heart, and I thought it was very, very impressive with Dr. Hassan's help, and so I just wanted him to read it to you, board members, just a sliver of his accomplishments.
Good afternoon, I am Chance Smith. I am graduating this Saturday from Manuel High School, and I will walk across the stage with a four-point-two GPA and one hundred sixteen thousand dollars in scholarships. I plan to pursue a post-secondary education, majoring in mechanical engineering at Bradley University. My time at Manuel has prepared me. I was enrolled in our, I was enrolled in our JOTC program where I learned leadership skills. I have been a top student in our manufacturing program, where our instructor taught us industry-level skills. During my senior year, I've been working at Caterpillar and will continue working there as an intern this fall. Having been a student, student board member, I know about our entire district at a deeper level. Peoria Public Schools will provide, Peoria Public School provides all of its students with a high-quality education. We have AP and dual-credit classes at every high school. I am looking forward to joining, joining a long line of alumni who make a difference in our community every day.
Congratulations! Look at that. We are always so proud of all of our students, but so nice to, and you're going to stay, you're going to stay here. You're going to stay here in Bradley and stay working at Cat? Look at that. Awesome, congratulations to you. Board members, any other presentations or suggestions? Okay, reports from board committees. We're just going to keep it going, because they're going to have their own moment. Any reports from board committees? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?